And tonight, we're going to call on Commissioner Coggan. He will be both leading our prayer and our pledge.
We humbly approach your throne this evening, God, thanking you for this day that you've given us to live for you. Father, may our lives be pleasing to you, and may each and every day we strive to live a life that is holy, pleasing, honorable, and humble in your sight, Father. Father, we thank you for this time of year when we remember the birth of your son. Whether or not he was born this time of year, we don't know, Father, but what we do know is what happens to our hearts and our spirits and our lives at this time of year. And, Father, we thank you for that, because every good, pleasing, and wonderful thing comes from you. And for that, we are grateful. And for that, we pray. In your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black. Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner P. Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Jernigan. Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Bullen.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you. You have received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. We'll call on Commissioner Farley for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have read in the minutes of last month, I make a motion, we approve them as mail.
I have a motion. Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any additions or corrections? There being none, all of those of you in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we have a time of period that we allow for public comments, and we'd like to recognize Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Racing toward financial ruin, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, for Rutherford County, Tennessee, was just released on December 7, 2009. It shows that as of June 30, 2009, the total debt of our county, including both the principal debt and the interest debt, has reached a staggering total of $565,655,126, significantly higher than the total debt of our county on June 30, 2008. On that date, just one year ago, the total debt was $507,511,578. This represents an increase of $58,143,548. The taxpayers were subjected to a tax increase during the fiscal year 2008-2009. Then, during the fiscal year 2009-2010, they were subjected to another significant tax increase. And within the last few weeks, the local newspaper reported that Rutherford County is warning the property owners that during the fiscal year 2010-2011, still another increase in taxes may be expected. In times like these, when approximately 10% of the workforce in our county remains unemployed, and the number of foreclosures on homes continues to fill several pages in each edition of the Daily News Journal, what kind of reasoning lies behind the county commissioner's decision to ignore the obligation to stop this wild deficit spending and to ignore the necessity of reducing the astronomical debt of the county? And I would remind you that the federal government is working hard and long to implement policies that would further assault your wallet on two other fronts, one being the health care bill, which it is estimated would add at least $1,500 to each taxpayer's annual tax burden while reducing the quality of your health care. The second blow to your wallet is the cap-and-trade initiative, which is fueled by the climate change movement. This initiative would impose huge costs on the economy and undermine job creation. By the Obama administration's own estimates, cap-and-trade would cost taxpayers at least $645 billion, and perhaps as much as $2 trillion. This equates to $2,100 to $6,300 per American. What is most infuriating about the cap-and-trade initiative, which is being formulated in Copenhagen right now, is the fact that it is based on what we now know to be questionable science and a narrative of lies and omissions. So this is what taxpayers have to look forward to from now to the far distant future. It would seem that the philosophy of government under both parties can be boiled down to two acronyms: ATM and ASM. Always take more and always spend more. It must stop. The reversal of this trend must begin at the local level.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Now, we have a resolution of recognition on behalf... Excuse me, Commissioner Bullen.
Mr. Todd's a fine citizen, and I'm glad he comes up here to give his point of view. But we have to listen to this month after month, and anybody to listen to this the first time would think that Rutherford County's in terrible shape. We're in better shape than most counties in Tennessee, and I'd like, if the commission will tolerate it for a moment, for Mrs. Nolan to quickly respond about our debt. So if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like for her to respond to that note that we had to sit through.
Ms. Nolan, you've been requested to respond. Are you prepared to make a few comments?
No, other than, I don't believe it's been any surprise to discuss the increase of debt for the last year, when we have been debating the two middle schools and the elementary school. So that, we borrowed those funds at the end of the last fiscal year. So, I mean, it's not really a surprise, it shouldn't be a surprise, that our debt has increased. It has been well debated on this floor.
Okay. That being said, let's don't start a debate on this, Mike.
Well, if you're going to give Dr. Bullen a chance, let me speak, if that's okay, sir. I just want to say, Mr. Todd, I applaud you for coming up here. You're one voice. I may not agree with you, but every citizen that sees what's facing this county ought to start speaking up. We've got a few that do speak up, Ms. Allen and others that speak up, and I applaud you. We need more people like Dr. Todd to come up here and speak. Even if you don't agree with him, I applaud your efforts. You're one of the few out of 250,000 people that have the backbone to come up here and voice your opinion and be subjected to criticism. So my hat's off to you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That all being said, we're going to move on, and our public, as always, we allow them to speak every time, and whoever wants to speak certainly has that opportunity, and we will continue to afford them that opportunity. We appreciate their participation. Okay. Resolution of recognition on behalf of the 2009-10 Rockville Middle School Football Team. Commissioner Farley will be presenting that. Thank you.
First, I'd like to, Coach, if you would, and the principals, assistant principals, and your team, if you want to come on up, please. I want to honor y'all. While these guys are coming up, I just wanted to let you know that Commissioner Rogers is not the only one that can fill the stadium up. Commissioners, what we've got here tonight is a resolution of recognition for the 2009-2010 Rockville Middle School Football Team. Whereas the 2009-2010 Rockville Middle School Football Team played in the finals of the 2009-2010 County Middle School Championship for the first time since its inception two years ago. And whereas, after a 2-6 season last year, the team won the tournament for the first time in the history of Rockville Middle School with a record of 7-2. And whereas, this Rockville team had a scoring average of 23 points per game and a defensive average of giving up only eight touchdowns in nine games. And whereas, Coach Keith Stevenson had been a Rockville Middle School coach, head coach, for two years, and this season was assisted by Mike Benzey, Garfield Chestnut, Jonathan DeBerry, Kyle Green, and Joe Pace. And whereas, Rockville ran through the Rutherford County schedule with a 7-2 record, won the county tournament, beating Central Middle School 16-6 for the championship in the final game of its history at Central Middle School. And whereas, Rockville was 4-0 on home games and captured the championship game as well, and all county honors went to Emmanuel Smith, the quarterback, Tony Drew, the running back and linebacker, Ted Unwo, wide receiver and linebacker, and Austin Ross, lineman and punter. And whereas, Rockville Middle School was also successful in the classroom. And get this, people, they had, out of 50 of those players, this is what I liked the most. They had 3.28 grade average. Whereas, Rockville Middle School Team would like to use this resolution to thank Rockville Administration of Principal Fred Barlow and Assistant Principal Chris Tredway for their constant support, encouragement, and also thanks go to the faculty, the staff, the students, the parents, and the supporters of Rockville Middle School. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2009-2010 Rockville Middle School Football Team on their accomplishments by winning the 2009 County Championship. And to Coach Keith Stevenson and his staff for their dedication and commitment to these young men, resolve this 17th day of December 2009, and I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Mayor, commissioners, parents, and fans, thank you for your support. We appreciate being recognized by the Rutherford County Commission for our accomplishments. With special thanks going to Commissioner Farley for the recommendation, and Commissioner Williams for representing our district. We started working last February with the goal of winning the championship in mind. With hard work and commitment by players, coaches, and parents, we were able to accomplish this. Not only are we proud of what we've done on the field, but also in the classroom by achieving that 3.28 grade point average. Also, we find time to volunteer around school. We appreciate and thank the Rockville community for the great support during the season. Rockville is truly a great community to live in and work. Lastly, there are some team members and coaches that cannot be present tonight due to basketball or personal reasons, and they wanted me to extend their appreciation as well. Thank you again, and have a safe and merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, all of you that have made that successful season so special. Okay, next, we're ready to enter the elections and confirmations part of our agenda, and we're calling on Commissioner Coggan to come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, all of you have received a list of applicants for notary public. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Secondly, we need to fill four vacancies on agricultural board. We'll do this all at once, but I would specify that there are four openings on there, two of them being needed to be filled by commissioners, and those are Commissioner Jack Black and Commissioner Anthony Johnson. Also, one farmer being recommended, Stan Vought, and one farm woman, and the recommendation from the steering committee for that position is Francille Whitworth. And, Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thirdly, we need to fill a vacancy on the community care board. The steering committee recommends Frances Jernigan. Mr. Chairman, I move for her approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Fourth, fill an alternate vacancy for the beer board. The recommendation for that position is Mr. David Nipper. Mr. Chairman, I move for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? No. All right, continue.
Fifth, we need to fill two vacancies on the Correctional Works Center Board. Frances Mosby and John Taylor are the recommendations for that, and, Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, from Commissioner McAdoo. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And last, we need to announce two vacancies on the public building authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coggan. There is no unfinished business, and, let's see, the next thing we would do would be the purchasing committee report. You have a copy of that in your package? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Cook made a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Commissioner Gooch, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Mrs. Ely, we will then start with our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
We will begin with item K2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. And we have budget amendments from the Insurance Department and Domestic Violence. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Insurance Department, we need to appropriate a contribution from Cigna to assist with the Employee Appreciation Day expenses. That is increased revenue from contributions and gifts, $1,100, to increased expenditures of other charges, $1,100. From Domestic Violence, using money from the reserved account for Victims Assistance Program, $4,900, to purchase a copy machine and the related maintenance agreement, a maintenance agreement of $900 office equipment, $4,000. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, two abstain. Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Item K2B, an ambulance service fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, increased revenue for other charges for services, and again, we have done this several times, this is for medical coverage at special events, $1,645, and increased expenditures, overtime pay, $9,069, Social Security, $599, State Retirement, $1,237, Employer Medicare, $140, and travel, $600. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have any questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item K2C, a resolution authorizing renewing a contract with CCMSI for brokerage services for the on-the-job injury program and property and casualty claims. Whereas Cochran Claim Management Services, Inc., has offered a favorable renewal of the third-party administrator and brokerage services for on-the-job injury and property and casualty claims, with a decrease in the technology fees and the total annual administration cost decreasing from $112,665 to $111,665. And whereas, the brokerage services provided by CCMSI yielded a significant drop in casualty premiums in 2007-2008, and the premiums have remained low in the subsequent years, and CCMSI helped Rutherford County with the transition from a workers' compensation model to an on-the-job injury model in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the renewal with CCMSI for third-party administrator and brokerage services for on-the-job injury and property and casualty claims effective January 1, 2010, through June 30, 2011, with the annual administrative cost being $111,665. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K2D, a resolution amending the Health Insurance Summary Plan document to comply with Michelle's Law. Whereas, a new federal law named Michelle's Law has been enacted that provides for continuation of health insurance dependent coverage for college students who would otherwise lose eligibility because of reduction in their full-time class status or a medically necessary leave of absence from school. Whereas, Michelle's Law applies to almost all insured and self-insured group health plans that cover dependents and use student status to determine eligibility. And whereas, in order for Rutherford County to comply with Michelle's Law, the following amendment is required to the Health Insurance Continuation Information Section of the Health Insurance Summary Plan. Michelle's Law requires coverage for student medical leaves that start after the effective date of the law. The law applies to all medical and dental plans, including pharmacy and behavioral health, regardless of funding. The law requires plans which cover students to maintain coverage on the dependent if the child's status as a student ceases due to a medically necessary leave of absence. Written certifications stating that the child is suffering from a serious illness or injury and that the leave of absence is medically necessary must be submitted from the attending physician. In order to qualify for a medical leave of absence, students must be enrolled in a post-secondary educational institution as defined under eligible dependent, page 10. Coverage will not terminate if the dependent student ceases to satisfy the student definition under the plan due to a medically necessary leave of absence, provided the student was enrolled in the plan on the day before the medical leave started, and the leave is considered to be medically necessary as defined below. Medically necessary leave of absence means a leave of absence of a child from a post-secondary educational institution or any other change in enrollment of the child at the institution that (1) starts while the child is suffering from a serious illness or injury; (2) is medically necessary; and (3) causes the child to lose student status under the terms of the plan. The dependent student's coverage will continue until the earlier of (1) the date that is one year after the first day of the medically necessary leave of absence, or (2) the date coverage would otherwise terminate under the terms of the plan, for example, the parent's termination of employment or death, marriage of the child, or the child reaches the student limiting age, et cetera. The dependent child's coverage will be the same coverage in effect for the child on the day before the start of the leave. If coverage changes for any reason, the child's coverage changes along with the parent's coverage, provided the changed or the new coverage also covers students. The child must remain covered under the new coverage for the remainder of the applicable period. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Health Insurance Continuation Information Section of the Rutherford County Health Insurance Summary Plan document be amended by adding the foregoing language in its entirety in order to comply with Michelle's Law effective January 1, 2010. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Are there any questions or discussions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Item K2E, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended as follows. The Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation Grant for Virtual Enterprise from undesignated fund balance, $12,000, increased revenue, contributions, and gifts of $20,000, to increased expenditures to the Vocational Education Program, other salaries and wages, $5,000, Social Security, $310, State Retirement, $321, Employer Medicare, $74, substitute teachers, $8,500, other contracted service, $5,500, and instructional supplies and materials, $1,850. Vocational education, travel, $5,445, and in-service and staff development, $5,000. A transfer for temporary funding for school federal projects. Commissioners, you will remember in October, the county commission approved a resolution to provide for cash flow, and this is what this reflects. From undesignated fund balance, $1 million, to transfer out, $1 million. Special education, high-cost students, increased revenue from Education of Handicapped, IDEA Individuals with Disability Education Act, $14,874. Special education preschool grant, $4,835. Increased expenditures to the Special Education Program, teachers, $13,040, Social Security, $808, State Retirement, $837, Employer Medicare, $189. The preschool program, teachers, $4,239, Social Security, $263, State Retirement, $272, Employer Medicare, $61. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Does anyone have a question or a discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. It's 6:30, and it's now time for us to have our public hearing, and we only have one amendment to our zoning resolution regarding Article 20, signs, and we're going to call on Mrs. Embley to come forward and give us the request for that.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Before you have an amendment to Article 20 of our zoning resolution, which is the sign regulations, you may be aware that the planning department is working on reviewing and revising the entire Article 20 and of our signs, and we hope to have a finalized draft of that to you for your review in spring of 2010. However, in the meantime, we feel that this minor amendment will strengthen our regulations while we are finishing this project. Our current regulations do, of course, regulate signs. They permit a listed number of signs that you are allowed to have by right in certain districts, and they limit the height and size and whatnot. But since the writing of our resolution, there has been many technologies that have come out, such as LED signs, changeable copy signs, or electronic this time, which our resolution does not address. And so, because of this, we'd like to put in a simple statement that signs which are not expressly permitted in this article are prohibited. Now, we see this as a temporary measure. As we said, this will give staff the opportunity to craft appropriate regulations for the signs that aren't currently in our resolution, and as I said again, we'll hope to have that to you of spring and next year. Now, this was recommended approval by our planning commission at their November 23 meeting. They recommended approval by a vote of 9-4 and 1 against, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Mrs. Embley? Does anyone have any questions of Mrs. Emsley? Mr. Williams.
If we put this in there, does this prevent somebody from going to the BZA or coming back if they had an unusual situation that was not listed in here?
There is always the opportunity to appeal our decisions to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's avenues for that, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we presently under any legal actions, let's call them that, on any signs anywhere in the county?
Not that I'm aware of.
You expect...I know this is a ticklish situation, and there's as many different ways to put a sign up as there are signs, I suppose. You expect to be through with this, and just give me a guess.
Well, we've been working on the regulations. It was in our work plan for 2009, and we have started a draft. We hope to have a visual preference survey to our planning commission in February, and we really do foresee having a working draft by spring of next year. So we are...all three planners are working on this project this time.
But I was considering perhaps amending it to put a cap on the length of time, but if you expect to be finished that quickly, I don't believe that that's going to be necessary. If you don't finish relatively quick, I mean, what will eventually happen? And I refer to...well, let me tell you what could happen, and you already know, I'm sure. Someone will come along and put up a sign that's not in the regulations, right? And this has already happened in areas fairly close to us at this moment, which took months to...well, it's not resolved yet. I just want to avoid that, if we possibly can.
As do we. That's why we have listed this as one of our primary goals for this year and next. We do hope to have a draft, as I said, to you in 2009 that would craft some appropriate regulations for these types of signs, because there are places for them, but there are places where you'd want to limit their use as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right then. Thank you, Ms. Emsley. We'll have to then open this time for an opportunity for the public to speak, so we're going to declare the public hearing open with respect to this zoning amendment that's being proposed. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak? If so, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Okay, I don't see any person that wishes to speak, so therefore the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Sandlin?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
No.
That was Commissioner Johnson, I think. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. Thank you very much, Mrs. Emsley. Now, Mrs. Ely, we may proceed with your Budget Finance and Investment Committee report.
Commissioners, we are ready for item K2F, a resolution providing additional funding for Oakland Middle School and Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners previously adopted resolution authorizing funding to construct the Oakland Middle School and the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Whereas the middle school projects will experience a funding shortfall in the amount of $1,166,790. And whereas there is available funding in Fund 189, Other Capital Projects Fund, to cover the anticipated shortfall. And whereas it is being proposed to transfer the proceeds from the sale of the excess Gurley property in the amount of $312,655 to assist in providing the additional funding needed. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the budgetary shortfall for the Oakland Middle School and the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School in the amount of $1,166,790 be funded from available funds in various school-building program projects within Fund 189, Other Capital Projects Fund. And additionally, that the proceeds from the sale of the excess Gurley property in the amount of $312,655 also be utilized to assist in funding the shortfall. Resolved this 17th day of December, 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Okay, questions? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Harry Gill to come up and kind of shed a little light on some of the issues on this matter here.
Second, Commissioner Black. All those in favor of that suspension of the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, so we are suspending the rule and requesting that Mr. Harry Gill come forward and share with us any information he wishes to share. Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Gill, you can start and go the...start at the beginning and go to the end if you want to, to kind of head us in. One reason I've asked you to come up, and I was a little irritated if you've seen or heard from the meeting the other night at Budget there, and I wanted to come to this full commission with a, I guess, a full recommendation from the Budget Committee, but the more and more I thought about it, you know, one of the reasons that we sold, you know, that excess property, the Gurley property, is for those funds to go to the next school, which would be the high school whenever in due time it is due to be built there. But for it to go for engineering, grade work, whatever it's going to go for, and we're pulling out of these funds to, you know, to pay off this debt, which I'm proud, we're in a situation where we can spend these dollars here in our budget-wise and not have to pull out of your end-end fund balance or the county's end-end fund balance. But if you would, just kind of lighten us in on some of those things.
Of course, we didn't anticipate a $1.2 million shortfall, obviously. As a matter of fact, the last five schools we built have actually come in under budget. We're quite proud of that. Also, our history with respect to recent construction in the city of Murfreesboro, you know, we added on to Blackman High School, we added on to Oakland High School, we added on to Riverdale High School, and we didn't permit any of those buildings. The last five schools we built, for example, we built the Stewart's Creek Schools in Smyrna. And the town of Smyrna asked simply that we submit plans and let them review the plans. They didn't require any permitting. State Fire Marshal assumes the responsibility of coming in and inspecting buildings to make sure they're safe. Laverne asked for plans. They didn't even review it with us. They, I think, understood that we were probably within our right to construct those buildings without any kind of permits from the city of Laverne, so they just reviewed plans and we went forward. And at the end, at the conclusion, State Fire Marshal once again assumes the responsibility of making sure schools are built safely. No permitting was done at Smyrna-Laverne High School. The last high school we built in Murfreesboro, we did permit. So when we came...when it became time to start on these schools, the board did not have any desire to permit schools, nor did they think we should build schools. We received, since the last time we built the school in Murfreesboro, this opinion from the State Attorney General's office, and it was addressed to the Honorable William H. Goddard, Attorney for the Town of Dandridge, and the question was, can a town require its parent county to obtain a building permit for construction of a school or other public building within the town limits? And the opinion of the Attorney General was, a town may not require the county in which it is located to obtain a building permit for construction in a town of a county school building or other building of the county government. Second question was, must a county conform to planning and zoning regulations of a town for the county-owned property within the town limit? And the Attorney General said, it is the opinion of this office that, in the absence of a controlling statute, the county is not required to conform to planning and zoning regulations of a town for county-owned property within the town limits, which is used in the governmental capacity. So I think you could conclude that we were in our rights to probably proceed with construction without the blessing of the city of Murfreesboro. Obviously, they saw it different, and part of our dilemma was, you know, we didn't...you know, we want to work, we want to cooperate, but we received a letter dated March 5th basically advising. Part of the content of the letter is, I would remind you that the city's position on sewer service for this site is set forth in December 5th, letter to Mr. Clardy by Water Sewer Director Joe Kirchner. No city commitment is to provide sewer service to this site, has been made, nor has any sewer plan been approved. And receiving city sewer services means that the customer is obligated to comply with the city's sewer ordinance and fees. So obviously, once again, our dilemma was, we're sitting there not thinking that we don't need to pay these permits, and we shouldn't pursuant to this Attorney General opinion. At the same time, the city's saying, if you don't pay them, you're not going to hook on the sewer, essentially, which I think you knew that...you know the outcome of that. So we reluctantly agreed to pay those fees. Now, as a result of that, the fees were...and I might add, we always pay water and sewer impact fees. Example, when we completed Blackman High School, we paid $42,000. We paid $37,000...pardon me, for Oakland Middle, and comparable numbers for Oakland or Riverdale. I think they charge us $12 per student to hook into the sewer and $8 for water, and there's some other charges associated with that. So we don't think that we ought to be excused from those obligations, but we do think pursuant to that Attorney General opinion, we shouldn't be paying...permitting these schools. Anyway, we wrote him a check for $89,356 to permit Buchanan School and an additional $62,000 to permit Oakland Middle School. And when you do that, you're essentially at their mercy with respect to what their requirements are. And I understand from talking to a few folks, and maybe it's a credit to the city of Murfreesboro, and again, I'm not trying to pick a fight, I'm just stating that we don't think we should be permitting these things. But as a result of permitting, there were a bevy of charges, for example, extension of turning lanes, utility changes, landscaping requirements, auditorium ramp wasn't sufficient with what our engineers and architects said it was, had to add additional parking spaces, restriping. Eventually, this added up to somewhere in the vicinity of a million dollars. So that said, pardon me, even though we had $300,000 in each school's contingency, that's the reason we're down here. And again, you might say, well, you guys agreed to permit it, but it was certainly under duress. The board didn't want to permit it, didn't think they should have to permit it, and as a result, we're a million dollars short. And I think at some point, when future schools are built in Murfreesboro, I think we'll be back up here with the same scenario unless we find a way to come up with a, you know, amicable solution. So that's my spill on that.
That kind of turns a lot of other questions. I mean, it was in the county prior to this, but, I mean, I guess we considered, when the school board came to us and said, we need, you know, we need this, to purchase this property, and the negotiations with sewer and everything, that it was going to be basically like a Blackman until it was annexed in and knowing good and well, after we get the roads, after we get the school in, it's going to be annexed in, they're going to annex it at their convenience or whenever they want to. But this was in the county prior, and we was going to build it just like we was going to do Blackman and go on, but it changed. My question was back to the $312,000 on the Gurley property. I thought we earmarked that or tagged that for...we may have said the next school or next high school or next school, in general, school, but we didn't label it, so to speak,
Label it as anything as to specific school.
Well, it was in a format in the budget as next school, whether that be for site work or whatever, or whatever, engineering.
Actually, that was other money that was...that we did have, that was future high school. We did have that, but this is money that was set aside, and that was just for this, you know, for the sale. It was the profit that we made, and it was set aside for this body to decide what they were going to do with it. So it has not ever been applied to any project.
I'm not happy about it like I was at Budget, but we've got to move on with it. I'm just thankful that we've...that y'all have been very diligent in the school-building program, that we had these excess funds. We cleaned up the books, too, with dollars that were left, and being under budget, and we appreciate that. I just think maybe we still need to get an opinion on this, or not really an opinion...well, we got an opinion. I don't know what to do. I'm not an attorney, so we need help somewhere.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gill. Anyone else have a question of Mr. Gill? If not, then thank you very much, and we'll go back into deliberation here. I believe we did have a motion and a second. Was that correct, Mrs. Ely? All right. Now, are there other comments or questions on this motion regarding the additional funding for the two middle schools? If there's no other questions, then I assume you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, three no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item K2G, a resolution authorizing a contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities. Whereas judges in general sessions, criminal and circuit courts have the authority to order mental health evaluation and treatment for criminal defendants. And whereas during the last legislative session, Public Chapter 531 was enacted, making counties responsible for the cost of outpatient and inpatient mental health evaluations and treatment, court ordered for defendants charged only with misdemeanors. And whereas the Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities, DMHDD, will continue to make these services available through outpatient provider contracts and inpatient services at the state's mental health hospitals without interruption, and will continue to pay the cost for these services for defendants charged with at least one felony offense. And whereas DMHDD will bill the counties for outpatient services for defendants charged only with misdemeanors at the same rate providers are reimbursed for those services. And whereas DMHDD was granted authority to enter into contracts with local governmental agencies for the billing and payment for court-ordered mental health evaluation and treatment services with a per diem rate to be charged for these defendants. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to establish agreed rates and ensure payment for the evaluations and treatment necessary to evaluations ordered pursuant to TCA Title 33, Chapter 7, Part 3, for defendants charged only with misdemeanor crimes, beginning July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2010. Resolved this 17th day of December, 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, by Commissioner Daniels. Does anyone have any questions or a discussion? Commissioner Sandlin?
We mentioned this in Budget, another unfunded mandate, correct?
More or less correct, yes.
So did we come up...I think y'all were going to try to come up with a number between here and tonight of what kind of are we expected to see? I know it could be way off from whatever we ever think, but we look in $100,000 range, we're looking at a million-dollar range. What is it going to cost us on this thing?
To be honest, we don't know. I don't know, but I'd say it's somewhere less than $20,000 a year. That would be a high number, I believe.
Still.
Still a lot of numbers, but it's not a million or...but obviously, honestly, I do not have an accurate number. Commissioner Schaefer?
A question on the different courts that it's in.
A question on the different courts that it's in. Is Judge Davenport's court, is it considered general sessions, or is she not included?
She's not included here.
Are there other statutes that require us to pay for juveniles?
I don't believe it's one like this, no. But there are some other laws that have been put in place that monitor and measure how many people we're sending to the state for evaluations, juveniles, and if we exceed those limits, there are some other additional charges that we'll have to pay. But that's another whole set of rules, I think, that are being put in place. Okay, let's see, Mrs., we got, we did get a motion and a second. Yes, we did. And are there other questions or discussion? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item K-2H, a resolution authorizing subordination agreement for Walter Raybon. This is to accommodate, to accommodate Mr. Raybon for home improvements. There is no liability to the county. Whereas Walter Raybon of 309 Lilly Lane was the recipient of the Rutherford County Home Grant in 2007 through the Tennessee Housing Development Agency. Whereas a lien in the form of a deed of trust is placed on their home to secure the home during the compliance with the grant terms. Whereas at the regular meeting on December 13, 2007, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution authorizing Rutherford County to subordinate the home grant deed of trust in favor of a new first deed of trust on the real property. Whereas Walter Raybon has requested a new subordination agreement regarding his refinance of the first mortgage on his property with a new proposed note, which the county will be subordinate to being increased to $104,037 from $98,556. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other necessary county officials of Rutherford County be and the same are hereby authorized to subordinate and execute any and all documents necessary to subordinate the home grant loan and deed of trust in favor of Rutherford County through the Tennessee Housing Development Agency in favor of a new first mortgage for the use and benefit of Walter Raybon of 309 Lilly Lane in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, in an amount not to exceed $104,037. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion second from Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have a question? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2I, a resolution authorizing acceptance of ARA Burn Grant Program Funds from the Administrative Office of the Courts to be used for courtroom security and technology. Whereas at the regular meeting on September 17, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to submit an application to the Administrative Office of the Courts for the ARA American Recovery and Reinvestment Act 2009 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and additionally, to execute the grant contract subject to a grant being awarded. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified by the Administrative Office of the Courts of a grant award in the amount of $4,935 to be used for the purpose of purchasing high resolution PTZ cameras for courtrooms. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, to recognize the proceeds to be received from the ARA 2009 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and to appropriate the proceeds for the purpose of purchasing high resolution PTZ cameras for courtrooms. Administrative Office of the Courts ARA Burn Justice Assistance Grant increased revenue of $4,935 to increased expenditures for data processing equipment, $4,935. Resolved this 17th day of December 2009. I move for approval.
Second from Mr. Jordan. All right. Any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2J, the 2010-2011 budget calendar. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the 2010-2011 budget calendar be approved, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, with the adoption date for the 2010-2011 budget scheduled for June 28, 2010 at 9:00 a.m. I will call your attention to several dates so that you might put it on your calendar and know some of our planning. Our April the 29 meeting is the meeting where the mayor and the finance director will present the work done to that date with whatever they have worked with the department heads at that point in time. We will need to have work done to date as of June 3 for publication. And you will notice that June 15 is our public hearing on the proposed budget, and that is at 7:00 p.m. here in the courtroom. And the final proposal to the full commission will be presented on June the 28. So if you will start marking your calendar for this new budget cycle. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have any questions on this? Okay, all those of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Ely. Let's see, we're ready to then proceed with the other reports. And our next report is from the Health and Education Committee. Commissioner Jordan?
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Back in October, late October, I asked Mr. Gary Clardy, Assistant Superintendent, if he would come up sometime before the first of the year and keep the commission informed on the progress at Buchanan Middle School, Oakland Middle School, also plans for, to renovate McFadden perhaps, and Central Middle School into Central Magnet School. And he has, we settled on tonight, and without objection, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for Mr. Clardy to come forward.
All right, without Mr. Objection, we have Mr. Clardy scheduled on this agenda to make this presentation, so it'll take us just a moment to get, get his presentation set up. While they're doing that, we will, we've had a request for a three to five minute break, so if you would, you may be excused, but please return no later than five minutes. A little recess here. Okay, we're all back in here again, and we've had a nice recess, so we're going to now let Mr. Clardy continue with his, start his presentation and tell us all the good news about construction.
Well, we're moving ahead on both projects, actually, three projects that were requested, and I've always heard and read and been told that a picture's worth a thousand words, so you're going to see a lot of pictures here. I'm going to do very little talking if I can get away with it. I'm not getting all of this. This is Whitworth Buchanan. Have some pictures here, they're a little bit dim and it's light. You can see as we go through here, the shape we're getting in, where we're getting in under roof. This shot down the corridor where the masonry's finished, and the rough ends are going in. Another picture of masonry and block. And here's a picture to the outside of the building where you can see where we have some roof on. Also, this is off Manchester Pike. You can see at this point there's a curb in along the entry road or the continuation of Elum Road, and we now have that paved and are up out on the mud on the west side. The next one is Oakland Middle School. We're just a little bit ahead on Oakland Middle School. You can see here, we already have some roof panels on. And they're pretty much same shape. This is a little bit ahead in certain areas. All the geothermal wells are drilled at Oakland. The site's been a little bit drier over there because we're on a lot more rock than we are out in the country at Whitworth Buchanan. We're in the process of doing our last stages, phases on Oakland High School roof. That's been a continuing battle, and we've just about got the whole thing replaced now under the capital improvements money. Smyrna High School track and resurfacing. Some members of the commission had wanted us to go through and start resurfacing these tracks, so we're trying to do two a year, and we've gotten our two done for this year. We did Smyrna and Luverne. Last year, we did Blackman and another Riverdale thing. I don't know if all of you have seen the tennis complex or not, but I thought I'd bring you some pictures. That's now finished, and we're processing final credit change order and about $20,000. Very nice. Central Magnet School, we plan on issuing bid documents on that on January 8. January 19, we'll have pre-bid conference at 10 o'clock a.m. at the school. February 2, the bid opening at Central Office. And mid-February, we have arranged schedule over there and work with the principal to start construction in mid-February. We have a lot of asbestos tile that we're going to remove and replace as we're doing the floor tile. We're putting in science labs over there. We're redoing the library and extending it out into some rooms upstairs, so there'll be a middle school and a high school library, and they will be separated. Also, we're upgrading the restroom and new lockers in some of the areas. So we're just addressing the things that will make a great academic environment over there. Here's a picture of it. Also, McFadden School of Excellence will be doing the renovations over there this summer. Also, we're doing some damp proofing to the walls, replacing tile, redoing some ceilings in there and painting and those types of aesthetic things. Just quickly, we've had, in my maintenance department, we've had 6,944 work orders this year to date from the beginning of fiscal year, and we have completed 6,690 of them. Good little chart. We're doing, also, I'd like to say, due to the capital improvements money that we get, we have our roofs in good, good shape now. We had two roof leaks reported this last heavy rain we had, and one of those turned out to be a sweating pipe, so we only had one. We're doing well in that area with the money that we were working with. Technology, there's, we've had 500, 5,520 tickets this year so far, and there's only 455 of those open at this time. Those can be anywhere from replacing a mouse to entire server. We do principals' requests. Just quickly, you can see through this list that we are either completing the list or have things scheduled in that list. Also, there's been some questions from the commission about our classroom projector status. Last year, in 2008, in September, we only had 45% of our classrooms with a projector and a screen in our schools. This year, due to the stimulus funds, that, the title money that went to the schools, they have purchased projectors. The technology department is furnishing the hangars and mounting those, so we're doing all of that. And at this end, the end of this school year will be 70, about 73% complete. So there's about 25% of our rooms that don't have projectors yet, and a lot of those are portables, which we don't put those in due to theft and that kind of, those kinds of There are some projects that we completed recently. And then, Mr. Schaefer asked about some cost on square foot comparison, and I polled several of the counties around Bedford County, Sumner County, Wilson County, Williamson County, and then I have ours out here. And these are the square footage prices that we're seeing, and I don't have the dates on these, but I know that some of these are fairly recent. Williamson County has the site work included, so I priced out Rutherford County square foot wise, included site work and not included. And the top numbers are not included. The last two schools are $87 just on the construction. Of course, they've gone up a little bit since these were put together, and I didn't have those correct numbers plugged in here. At $87, $89, $90 square foot, but with site added in, we're at $104. And as you can see, up in Williamson County, we're doing a little bit better than they are in the pricing range. Going up to Sumner County, there's some schools in there that are very close to where we are. Bedford County, that looked like a pretty nice high school they built down there, is 145, 64 square foot without the site included in it. So I think we're doing well on our pricing. We're doing a little bit better than most people around that are joining us counties. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Mr. Clardy, on the tennis courts and everything, is that project about done, or is it done, or?
It's complete.
It's complete. When are they having, are they going to have us out there to ribbon cut or something, or?
They've had a ribbon cutting down there probably a month or 45 days ago.
Oh, they forgot to send me an invitation to that.
Me too.
We were both invited. Sorry about that. We were there. Other questions for Mr. Clardy, please, if it's, without objection, we'll let you get some more information. Mr. Farley?
On the Oakland Middle School and the Buchanan Middle School, I couldn't really tell, what type of roofs are they going to be? I know they're, they're not flat, but?
They're slope standing seam metal roofs, just like on the other five schools that we've built recently.
Okay.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Sparks, and then Mr. Jernigan?
I just want to compliment on getting those costs down for square foot of there and compliment Mr. Gill and your staff. What areas have y'all found significant savings compared to other counties? Roofs?
Well, we're not putting a lot of whistle and bells on our schools. We're building them solid. We're building them so they'll be maintenance free. And we're decreasing the building envelope on the inside. And then we built the same school enough. I think that our builders that are bidding on these things have previous experience with us, so they know how much it costs, and there's not a lot of money just put on top of it. They pretty much know the percentage they're going to make when they go in, and there's not any guesswork involved in it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Jernigan, and then Mr. Schaefer.
I'd just like to make a comment since Mr. Gill on the school... I'd just like to make a comment, since Mr. Gill on school systems is hard, Mr. Clardy. Most of the commission has been up here where we visited schools and all a few years ago. Any of you who go around and look at these schools now, you'll see all of them up to date, jobs done. And I think that's a tribute to the work this man's done, that anybody that's had any dealing with him knows that, and I just want to recognize him for it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jernigan. That's a point very well taken. Mr. Schaefer?
Second Commissioner Jernigan's words, but I do have a question about the roofs and geothermal heating and cooling. That's what we've put in. This will make something like seven, the last seven schools we've done or had, and they cost a little more upfront, but save us in the long run. Are these other counties using metal roofs and geothermal?
Most of them are using geothermal now, and some of them are partially metal roofs. So if you look at, from that aspect, we are actually getting a lot more value on roofing.
Okay, Mr. Clardy, some of those charts up there had some numbers and so forth, including this one regarding these comparative data on the square footages. I'm sure you could make a copy available so I can put it in the commissioners' boxes, if you would, on some of those pages, please.
Okay.
Other people have a question. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Clardy, I've heard, I guess rumors, or people have asked me questions on, I think their motion detector and heat sensing switches in schools. Are we, will we propose to put those switches in the existing schools, retrofit? Or are we planning on putting them in future schools, or just, do we have any plans on that?
Well, we're waiting on a contract from the state right now to bring that forward. I think it was budget that told us to bring it back around once we got the contract, but we're looking at going in and retrofitting all of our schools and also bringing even our newer schools up to date with that, and then also incorporating it into future schools.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Clardy. That was a very good report, a very informative report. We need to let our technical assistants, if you want to rearrange this just here very, ever so quickly, please.
Tonight, we have a resolution pertaining to the Ammerville Community Center lease. Whereas the attached lease agreement between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Ammerville Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated provides for lease for county-owned property to said community organization, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to execute said lease with Ammerville Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated. Now therefore be it resolved, a Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, the county mayor, and other appropriate officials, be and they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the lease agreement with Ammerville Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated. A copy of said lease agreement being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved the 17th day of December 2009. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? All of you in favor of the end of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Commissioner. There is no report from the Public Safety Committee tonight. Now we're ready for the Public Works and Planning Committee report, and we'll call on Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has three resolutions tonight. First resolution, whereas the Tennessee County Uniform Road Laws of 1974 has set out various civil and criminal penalties for the working on private roads by county highway department personnel, and whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the Rutherford County Superintendent, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the list of the Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-10-103 and 54-10-104. These roads shall be the only roads which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolved this 17th day of December 2009. I so move.
Commissioner Black, second. Now, does anyone have any questions? All right, all those of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Unanimous.
Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the planning department, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves attached list of public drainage easements. Exhibit 1 is submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-903 and 54-904. The public drainage easement shall be the only public drainage easement which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolved this 17th day of December 2009. I so move.
Commissioner Williams, second. Does anyone have any questions on these easements? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas TCA 55-8-153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any roads being maintained by Rutherford County, authorize it to erect appropriate signs, and whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested a 40 mile per hour speed limit with appropriate signs be posted on wayside road, a designated county road. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limit be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and maintenance and preservation of this county road and persons traveling thereon. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows: That the maximum speed limit be and shall hereafter be 40 mile per hour for automotive vehicles traveling on wayside road. Said speed limit being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department presented to TCA 55-8-153, resolved this 17th day of December 2009. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any questions on this resolution? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Commissioner Jernigan. Now we're going to call on Commissioner Rogers for the report on the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The commission may recall at our last commission meeting, the desire on the part of the commission to refer the issue of the Private Act concerning our county attorney back to steering for further review and comment. At our last commission meeting, we received some public comments from members of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, and we have since, at our commission meeting, vetted those issues and heard from good suggestions, had good debate with the RNA members, and considered some of those comments and incorporated some of those comments into our new Private Act. I will say that, so I think the new Private Act, which is attached to the resolution, represents a good compromise, a good joint effort, I guess, of both the commission and the public. We have heard the concerns and incorporated those into the new Private Act, mostly for clarity's sake and also to address some of the concerns about the commission retaining the authority to appoint the county attorney, as well as any other attorneys or legal services that the county may require. I will say that since the, since the meeting of the steering committee and the, this new Private Act has been drafted, I did receive one more comment from Ms. Susan Allen about the language that's in Section 3, having to do with, "Rutherford County may enter such additional written agreements with private attorneys and law firms for the provision of additional legal services as the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners may deem appropriate." She has suggested that, to even make it more clear, that language be amended to say, "additional legal services as approved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners," making it more clear that, again, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approves the provision of additional legal services. My response to her was, I don't think, in reading Section 3 as drafted, that anybody could mistake the fact that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners retains the right to hire additional legal counsel or provide for additional legal services. That may be a semantics issue. We do use, Commissioner Coggan pointed out to me, the "may deem appropriate" language in the resolution that Commissioner Jernigan just read, so it's a fairly standard phrase. I just want to put that out there for the commission's benefit, for the sake of full disclosure. In any event, here's the resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the attached Private Act to repeal Chapter 67 of the Private Acts of 1957 and to establish a new Private Act be submitted to the Tennessee General Assembly for adoption to provide for the office of the county attorney for Rutherford County, resolved this 17th day of December 2009. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Commissioner Coggan, second. Okay, if there's no discussion, then we're ready to vote, I suppose. Commissioner Williams.
Were you saying that we're gonna put the "approved" in there, or that what it was saying, what was, the language in there says that?
The language that's in the Act as drafted does not say that. It just says "may deem appropriate." She has suggested that it be changed to "approved," but my response to her was, I felt like that there was no reasonable debate about the language as drafted, meaning the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners has to approve the provision of additional legal services. I didn't, I thought it was just a semantics thing. I didn't, I didn't see the need to change it, but that's why I wanted to throw that out there for the commission's consideration. I told her I would.
Okay, I mean, I think it says that too, but I just wanted to, is that, could I ask, Josh, is that what that says?
Yes, that's my understanding of the language.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record surely reflect it was unanimous. Okay, any other business to come before this body? I know one or two of you had some things you wanted to announce. Commissioner Schaefer, did you want to announce something?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to bring up something that's gonna happen over the Christmas holidays. And Laverne High School has put in for and has received, based on, based on the contributions of the Laverne High School band, that the contributions of schools, the bands done in, for the school, the community, the county, and the state with the different performances they've put on, they have received from the Home Depot Foundation a $10,000 grant to renovate the band room at Laverne High School. And they're gonna do this with the Home Depot team on Sam Really Parkway and the band boosters over the Christmas break here. And they ought to be provided with new tile flooring that's gonna go through pretty much the whole band room, except where there's carpeting, new paint throughout the entire facility, and new acoustical ceiling tiles specifically for music rehearsal rooms. And there's also several other local companies that have helped on this, and I'd just like to mention them. There are local companies and contractors such as Jack's Glass, Hammer Nails, Handyman Service, RWI, Neff Rentals, Purey Imaging, Jim and Nick's Barbecue, Coca-Cola, Allied Waste, which is now Republic, Glidden Paints, LHS Band Boosters, especially Ms. Teresa Henderson, who did all the, a lot of the work on the paperwork, Ryobi, Blacken Decker, and Heavy Equipment. And this is just something that maybe more of the schools hopefully can look into and get and really help them out in the situations they're in, but $10,000, it's awful nice to be able to spend.
Thank you for that good report. Now, Commissioner Sandlin, you would like to make some announcement?
Yes, sir. I would just, Commissioner Rogers, I don't know if you were gonna mention about our delegation coming in January, and then about, if you'll, you'll go, I'll let you do all that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. As I sat down here, I realized, well, there's a couple of other things I probably needed to tell the commission about. We do have our annual meeting with the state legislators scheduled for, is it January 4th, I believe, Mayor?
Yes.
We certainly welcome all the commissioners to attend that. It's always a good productive discussion. I know there's several topics of interest that will come forth at this particular meeting. Also, one of the things I thought about when I sat down too, we are, as a steering committee, going to be now considering and moving to the legal services agreement. And so that has been, or should, should be shortly distributed to all the commissioners. We want to do the same thing that we did with the Private Act, and that is solicit all comments, questions, concerns about the legal services agreement itself, so we can address those at committee, have a good discussion, and then, and then bring forward a document that is, is ready to go when it comes to the full commission. Yeah, and that will be in February is when we will, we'll probably start discussing that in January, but February definitely, we need to have that ready to go.
Okay. Commissioner Sparks, did you want to make an announcement?
Real quick, just, just, you know, we, we seen Mr. Gill up here, and we seen this $1.2 million we paid here in fees and so forth. I just, one thing I'd like for this commission to do is just look at, when I see these two school systems and the money that we're spending out, and I'm seeing, like even with Mr. Todd speaking tonight, I know may, he may, some people may not like what he's, what he's mentioning, but, you know, I see the debt that we're incurring, and I think all the rest of us do, and I think if we don't watch this and be prudent about the vision of this county, I think the two school systems need to look at being unified. I don't know where you'd go with that. I don't know if that's the mayor, Mayor Bragg, the city manager, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Gill. I'd just like to see, you know, some, some vision down the road, whether it's next year, the year after, but there's no sense in duplicating cost, and there's no sense in duplicating two central offices, bus routes that are running the same route in city district, the county district. We're seeing our costs grow exponentially. All of us know that. They're growing every day, and what worries me is the debt that we're leaving our future grandkids. And we worry about the federal government, but it's happening right here, folks. And Mayor, I know you've seen it, and I know a lot of times our hands are tied of the problems that we face, but I think the discussion needs to be out there on the table, whether it's a workshop, and bring these leaders together. And, I mean, there's several people up here that are very bright that may not be here next year. Get these people on board. Mr. Rogers, Dr. Bullen, and let's look at... these people on board. Mr. Rogers, Dr. Bullen, and let's look at this, because it, it worries me, the future of this, of this county, not only this country, it worries me of what we're facing, because I don't know how we're gonna afford it. Our development fund is at an all-time low, what I see. And we need to be paying attention to this development fund and how low it's getting, because the taxpayers can't afford a big tax increase next year, and the year after, and the year after that. So what I'm asking is just, just just keep an open mind, and maybe, if there's a way we can get people to the table, Mayor, I'm asking you and Mayor Bragg and Mr. Gill to at least look at it.
Well, Mike, I'd just like to say that we have been at the table. We haven't found a practical way to address this quite yet, but we have been at the table together.
Well, let's come to the table once again, sir.
All right, thank you.
But real quick, want to compliment Mayor Bob Spivey and the Chamber of Commerce for naming him Business Legend of the Year. Many know that he had a stroke this year and had to resign. Want to applaud him for all the help he's helped our nonprofits. Also, want to compliment Robert Mullins for winning the Coon Victory Community Service Award, another past Smyrna Mayor. So kudos to, to Robert Mullins and Mayor Bob Spivey. Thank you.
Commissioner Bullen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not responding to him, so relax.
Oh, no.
Driving toward the courthouse tonight, it was just beautiful, as it always is this time of year. And I believe that our county employees were the ones, under Mr. Ben Mankin, were the ones responsible for getting the lighting up. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And we should give Ms. Shirley Jones some credit for the tree decorations and the wreaths, et cetera. So with, along with Ben's staff and, and other inmates that have helped us out there as well.
I think that needs to be recognized, because courthouse is beautiful. And once again, those members who were on the commission when we voted to renovate the courthouse, I want to thank you once again. It's the best money we ever spent. So on a positive note, the courthouse is looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. It is beautiful. We appreciate those that had that vision to help us do this. Anyone else want to say anything before we adjourn, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and enjoy the holidays that's forthcoming? There being no other business, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.